Board of Ed to order at 7:02. If you could please stand for the invocation. A moment of silence for Mr. Suzak and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I guess I've been on the board for a little while and I was going through my office the other day where my kids always did all their homework and prepared their stuff and probably drove me a little bit crazy. And I ran across this tattered piece of paper. And on it, it said, "A good education is the doorway to opportunity. A positive attitude is the stairway to success." And I think that's something we can all live by. And I'd like to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fire evacuation announcement. There are two exits here in case we have to evacuate this chamber. One in front of me, to your rear. Go down the stairs and out the double doors onto the grassy area. The other one to my left, your right. Go through these double doors, take an immediate left through the doors, down the stairs, and out into the parking lot. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Serrard?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Feely?
Here.
Mrs. Suzak?
Here.
Chairman Neville?
Here.
Dr. Shuman, do we have any board guests? Okay, then move on to item seven, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the iPad update. We have Ms. McKernan who is here with us along with Ms. Angela Foss, the Parkman math consultant. And they're here to talk to you a little bit about the successes that we've had both at Parkman and across the district with the iPad consortium over the past school year. I'll turn it over to them.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Certainly, this is something that's near and dear to all of our hearts here.
I'm sure. And I want to start out with a thank you for your support in, not just to support technology, but to support technology integration through this kind of approach. We want to be cautious in the way we deploy technology because ultimately it's a tool that leads to students increasing their skills and talents. We think we need to be thoughtful. These are expensive items. They can often be just fun, but they can be powerful learning tools. And we wanted to keep our eye on how we were using them very carefully. So we, as I think the board well knows, we asked the teachers to submit an application to be part of the consortium. And with that was the agreement that they would identify the applications that they were using, that they would submit data three times during the year, that they would attend meetings and talk amongst themselves, a learning community, about what was working and what was not working. And all of that happened this year. And so I want to thank you for your support because I think we're going to go forward and we're going to be more knowledgeable about how we use these products. We ran nineteen projects this year, deployed iPads from K to twelve. Nine of the final reports came in with significant gains in the areas that they tracked, the teachers tracked data on. The most common areas the teacher tracked data on were in Common Assessments, things such as the Ames Web, M Comp and M CAP, also Common Formative Assessments. Teachers reported regularly, nine of the projects reported dramatic gains. Nine more of the project reported good gains. And only one project had any kind of average or slight decrease. And normally, when you see a 2% dip in anything, it's statistically insignificant. So if you would, I'd like to read you some of the comments the teachers had. And then after, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the anecdotal comments that they gave us. And then I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Foss who has a great example of just one of our projects. So for instance, in one of their projects, it was a small group of students who are very, very slow learners, struggle to learn. And this teacher reported data indicating six of his seven students gained one full capped reading response to literature banned in half a year. Two of the seven students gained, I'm sorry, and two of his seven students gained one banned in writing from September to January. From January to May, he continued to see gains. And these are very challenged students at the high school level. Another teacher reported, this is a elementary math teacher, reported average increases in the Ames Web last year over a September to March period was 11% without the iPads. And this year with them, the average gain was 22%.
How much was that again?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So that teacher compared a group of students she had last year who didn't have the intervention with a group of students she had this year who did have the intervention of the iPads over the same period of time and saw double gain improvement as measured by the Ames Web M Comp test. And Ms. Foss is a math consultant, so she could tell you a lot more about the test. But it is a computational test that the students take three times a year. Another teacher, a high school teacher, reported twenty-six of his thirty-two students experienced a significant increase in performance as measured by two curriculum-based assessments compared with only eleven of eighteen in a comparison class. I had asked teachers to compare to a colleague who didn't have the intervention. And this teacher gained, reported twenty-six of his thirty-two had significant increases, asking a colleague where only eleven of eighteen did. In another group, this teacher compared two different groups of her students. The group that had the iPad intervention had made a 58% increase in a period of time with sight words, this is elementary reading, compared with a 49% gain in the group that didn't have it. So across the board, we kept seeing larger gains with the students who had the intervention. Some other comments I'd like to share with you, these are the anecdotal comments. Students love writing responses to each other. Teacher used them as a blog, used them for a blog. Students love writing their responses to each other. The blog has helped me to hear all of my students' thoughts in a more interesting way. I feel there was a great deal more enthusiasm because they were able to use their iPads to read my knowledge, I'm sorry, to read. Parents are downloading some of the apps we use in school and students are practicing skills at home, increasing the parent connections. Another teacher anecdotal comments, "A wonderful educational tool for my students and a great addition to reinforcing the instruction of mathematics. Very engaging, captivated the student's attention." A third teacher, iPad, this is Andrea Tarbox from Whitney. iPads open a whole new world of resources and teaching tools that allow me to be a more effective teacher. Students take more ownership and pride in their work because they are more independent. All of the years that I have been teaching this year, the students understood the different types of communication better than any other year. So we had across the board very positive results. They weren't even. Some teachers saw greater gains and some teachers saw slater gains. We did not see any losses with the exception of one class in a short period of time had a 2.2% drop in one area. We are, I'm very pleased that we deployed the iPads in this way. We want the feedback. It's important. When the teachers met, we met three times during the year over in the Board of Education Conference Room at Barnard School. And what I liked about it was the teacher shared what worked, what was not working. Because there are so many choices for the teachers to make that it was important for them to say, "Well, why didn't this work for you?" Or, "Yes, I think this one is a better, a better app or a better website." At the end of the final meeting, I asked everyone to report to me the most important application they used. So we were sure to have that next year. It was interesting for the elementary folks across the board in reading, it was an application called A to Z, A to Z Reader. And I looked at our usage of that tool. We had it dispersed pretty widely, but I made sure to increase our usage next year because it was so well-liked. The most favorite math application was, at the elementary level, was Splash Math, which I think Ms. Foss used, and at the high school was Ten Marks. Which was great because I had some ideas that I thought were very good, but I'm not using them every day. And one or two of them, the teachers were able to report, "That's not the most effective one for my children." So we don't pursue that then. And I think we use our resources more wisely in that way. So I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Foss as she can talk to you about what it looked like at the ground level.
Sounds great.
Well, hello, everybody. Good evening. I'm very, very thrilled to be here and I'm very, very excited about this because this is like one of the greatest changes in teaching that I have ever experienced, really. It's exciting, the iPad, they use the iPads. I'm a math consultant at Parkman School, elementary school, grades three to five. So I work with the students, third and fourth grade. And they were asked me to compare the results between the third graders this year and the results from third grade last year. Now, at Parkman, we always have wonderful growth across the board in math. But this year, it was just phenomenal. I was really honestly shocked at the data that I have as a result of what we did with the iPads. I was asked to explain a few, to answer a few questions. The first one was, why did I apply? I applied for the iPad consortium just because years ago, when the computers came out, we started using some of the simple computer programs in the computer rooms. I was really excited to see, I would pull out, we would, had inclusion classes for first and second grade, and I would go in half an hour a week with each class. And even the teachers were shocked at what that thirty minutes of time on a computer did with the children understanding things such as manipulatives. It takes a half an hour, a lot of times, to pull out manipulatives, another half hour to put them away. They could actually see these on the computer screen and manipulate them themselves. So because of that, I thought, I wonder how much more awesome the iPad is when it comes to this. And it is, it is. Here are some of the programs I used. Number one, Splash Math. Loved using Splash Math. And the reason I chose it was because I did some research and found that it was the top performing app for math. And then I also found that it had, the new Common Core State Standards were integrated in that. And that was really an important thing deciding on an app this year. I chose iXL because I was asked to have a comparison group between one app and another. And iXL isn't really an app, it's more of a, an internet website. But it was interesting to work with that also. And Math Op list was all about learning math facts. And I thought I'd take a second to just show you what Splash Math was like. This is a little girl's program. And so she would go into this little program and then she would click on Practice. And then she could choose from all of these different areas that she needed to work on to practice. So let's say, let's say she chose Number Sense. And there's all these different ideas with Number Sense, as in preparing numbers. So it says, "Which number is less than 400?" And she'd need to pick 100. And this is just, of course, basic. But she'd have that little guy saying yahoo and how excited she would get by that little guy jumping around. And if it was wrong, they kept giving her more and more chances. Okay, so this, you would need to have the right symbol. My fingers must be very sweaty. Oh. Huh. Drag it? Oh, drag it. Thank you so much. I love it. "Which number is less than 200?" See, but they know these things. These are the things we don't know. And then when they were done, look, they even showed that I needed to drag it. When they're done, they would go back to this little aquarium, which is prizes. And I know, we talked about this, we tried to figure out how we can make this the right way for you to see, but you can't see exactly sideways. But these are all these little critters that she earned. And then at the end of the game, I would let them play for a couple of minutes with their little guys, and they would make little noises. And if they, for whatever points they got, they could feed their little critters. And if the little guy was down the bottom, falling asleep, it meant it wanted to be fed. So they could feed them or they could drop an anvil on their head, just something that was enough to encourage them to want to do better and want to solve more math problems the next time. Here are their results. M Comp is a test that is an eight-minute time test. Children have eight minutes to take this test. And in those eight minutes, they have to answer as many math computation-type problems and then the time is up. And they get scored for how many they're able to accomplish correctly in eight minutes. And then after that, we base, we take that data and it's a nationally-normed test. So based on that, we can tell where they belong in the percentiles ranking across the whole entire nation. The M CAP test is more like the CMT test, it has mixed skills. So in the M Comp test, the children gained in fourth grade 36 percentiles. That's not 36 points, that's actually 36 percentile gain. You would normally expect in a year that a child may go up 10 percentiles, maybe 15 percentiles. Thirty-six is shocking to me. But in the M Comp, and the M CAP, which is all those mixed types of skills, they even made more growth, 52 percentiles. And in third grade, they gained 23 percentiles in the M Comp and in the M CAP, 60 percentiles. So these results show the impressive gains and they're validated by normed national testing. Here is a depiction of the average percentile gains. So on the left side, everything blue is the pre-test and everything green is the post-test. So that's, on the left there, that's the fourth grade, little under 20 percentile average. And at the end, in 2011, 2012, they're right around 30 percentiles. Compare that with 2012, 2013, they started off about the same. And then you can see the giant gain, almost above 50 percentiles. So they more than doubled their percentile growth in fourth grade. And the same in third grade, they have the little, the blue line is right around, in 2011, 2012, right around 30. And last year, they went up to 42, which is about 12 percentile points gain, which is wonderful, exciting news. But then this year, using the iPads, they started a little bit below what they were last year and the tremendous gains, almost, you know, 58 percentile at the end. And you can see the same with the M CAP, only greater gains in the M CAP. And I really think that that has to do with the program. I really, really strongly believe it has to do with using that program and constantly reviewing the types of questions that you would see on a mixed skill test. Here's a little quote, "If a child cannot learn the way we teach, we must teach in a way the child can learn." By an unknown author. Here are some of my reflections. iPads are an extremely powerful tool that have changed the world of education. The incredible results, as shown by the data, speak for themselves. iPads present math content in a colorful, entertaining, and engaging way that makes learning fun and non-threatening. Most importantly, the goal that I've always strived for, that my students will love math as I do, can be achieved through the use of the ever-improving world of technology, which is represented presently in the form of an iPad. And this is what you would call the piece de resistance. The end of the year, I got this letter and it made me cry from one of my students. You might not be able to read that clearly from what you see up there, I'll read it out loud to you. It's dated Tuesday, June 18, 2013. Dear Mrs. Foss, in class, we read The Giving Tree because you are very giving. So I am writing you. I think you are the best person because you always make everyone happy and a smile on everybody's face when they come out of your room. I am very thankful for you because you helped me so much with my math. You are awesome because you always plan events for us, your kids, and you always do great activities like the iPads." And I really believe that it has to do with the fact that she really felt non-threatening by math. She really enjoyed math. And it's all because of the iPad experience.
We wanted to bring you some presentations this year, just from the teachers. I think that our approach was successful. We want increasing dialogue between teachers about what's working. We want also to make sure that we don't continue to buy resources or use resources or take our time with programs that are less useful. There's so many choices to make. Of the projects that were out there, all but two teachers have asked to continue next year. Two did not. One teacher at Enfield Street School, who's a part-time teacher there, thought it would be better use for someone full-time. And one of the high school teachers at Enfield High School was not going to teach the same course and thought it would be more appropriate for another teacher. So all the others, we asked them at the end if they wanted to continue. They didn't have to reapply, but they would ask us to, they would write to me, they would tell me if they could continue with the obligations, which would be to continue to submit data, to continue to attend meetings, and to continue to share their experiences with their colleagues so that we can, we can help more teachers to use the tools successfully. So I'm sure you may have questions, but I wanted to once again thank you on behalf of the teachers and of course, the students. And I feel it was a very successful project and one that we'd like to continue.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure some board members have questions. Anybody down? Joyce, I'd be surprised if you didn't. Tom, next. Anybody down here?
Did you, did the students acknowledge that they actually recognized the gain that they had?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. There are different parts of that app that will show them. There's little graphs that show them how much they've improved. And they'll come back from their classroom saying, "The thing that I practiced yesterday on the iPad, we practiced in class and I was so smart, I knew everything." The teacher was shocked. So yes, they recognized it. And they also recognized the happiness that it gave to them. They were very excited and happy about being involved in that.
You had a group working on these programs, apps?
Yes.
At the same time. When one got that sound?
Yes.
Was it distracting to the rest or were they so interested in what they were doing?
They were all, all of their iPads were together working and they were all making those sounds. And so they were all excited, "Oh, good job, good job." No, they were encouraging one another. Yes, I think that that little, that little sound and music behind everything too kind of kept them motivated too. It's just, it's just like a really fun way to learn. Learning has changed so drastically than when we were learning. It really is exciting.
Now for the harder question. I suspect in each of these groups, according to the chart we've got here?
Yes.
You had one student who didn't gain. Were there problems above and beyond what the work in the class was doing?
Wasn't that they didn't gain, it was that they started off so high. When I, when I pull up children, I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to follow these very strict guidelines. I'm supposed to only take on children who are below a certain percentile. But these were children that I had worked with last year and I wanted to keep them for another year. So if you look way at the begin, at the very left, you'll see that they're, the very left where it says the benchmark, the problem, the problem was that they had started off, let's say, the 55th percentile on the pre-test. So to, to make a gain, they would have had to go up. And the test, it's more and more difficult to keep that percentile when you have a very high percentile. That's the reason.
I'm glad to hear it, it's not negative.
No, it was, right. They didn't start what they were supposed to.
It's a continuation.
Exactly. So I, I like to normally hold on to the children for another year just to be sure that they're confident in their learning. I don't want to let go of them too quickly.
Does that mean you're also holding on this one for the next year?
I hold, I'm holding on to a lot of those children, yes, although they have made such wonderful growth. I still see a need to keep on working with them to build up their self-confidence and I know where they're at so I can work with them and build them where they're.
And that is an important piece of the knowledge, isn't it?
Exactly.
To get an idea of where your students are when you start with them?
Exactly, yes. Know where their weaknesses are, yes, and their strengths. Exactly, Joyce.
Thank you.
Tom?
Did you have a control group?
I didn't actually have a real control group. They asked me to have a control group and instead I did the iXL and the Splash Math comparison. But you could say that I had a control group because I actually did all, I did all these tests last year until the data you see are those actual same exact tests last year. So I guess you would say I did, in reality, it wasn't expected of me, but I did.
We asked every, we asked every teacher to identify a control group. And the two most common ways were to either compare to last year's results, and not exact children, but at least exact location and look at gains. And the other would be to identify a colleague who was teaching the same course or the same level and just say, "Can I see your data versus mine and see if this intervention is making a difference?" We didn't want a teacher to say, "We'll give it to Class A but not Class B," because if they were there, they needed to be used. So either compare to a colleague or to last year's results.
Just, the reason that I'm asking that is, other than the pre-test, I'm trying to figure out what you used as a baseline to determine the massive leaps. I mean, I understand, I mean, it's kind of hard to evaluate something if you don't have an established baseline.
Well, I did. I showed you on the iPad, on the screen, it's not on your data sheet there, but I showed you on the screen, I can tell you right now what it said. Last year, the results went 20.1 up to 32.9 for the fourth grade. And then 31.7 up to 43.7 for the fourth grade. So you're talking about, as I said, you're talking about 12 percentiles increase last year from the baseline to their post-test. But this year, same exact baseline, same exact test, same exact everything. They went from 19.8, they started a little bit lower, up to 53.6. So we're talking about, you know, 30-something percentile gains, that's what you see there. So last year, those numbers were only 12, which isn't only, I'm saying only, 12 percentiles, that's a big, that's a big gain for percentiles on a test over a year. We're talking about, you can see, 36 percentiles on your data there this year, even more than that in some of them. So yes, I do have a control group and that's, the data you don't exactly have right there, but it was on the slideshow. I'd love any more questions you might have, anything else? That was a good question.
Do you guys have any questions then? Peter?
It's a good question. I'm sorry.
How many teachers are involved in this?
We had nineteen projects and I will have to check the number. I think there were a couple shared. I think we had 25.
And when they meet three times a year over at the central office, when are they doing those meetings?
They, they met in the Board of Education Conference Room. I had a brief agenda. We met for about an hour each time. And normally, the first agenda item would be to share, initially, I should, I should stop. The first meeting, we did a lot of work through Matt Gaffney, you met in the middle, because Matt helped the teachers.
That's not what, that's not what I'm trying to get to. Was it during the school day or after school?
After school.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said, "What did they share, not when." Yes, they met after school.
Anyone else? Jen?
I want to say, we, I would go in on Wednesdays to Mrs. Tarbox's class and, to help her with accelerated math. And then I said, "Well, since you have the iPads, let's use them." So we were using them much more efficient than accelerated math. And, you know, the children can see their gains without being in a line and everything. Going forward, what do you, how much time did they use the iPads in a week, the children? And what would you recommend moving forward? In a classroom setting versus, I mean, because you're.
I had them, I had them three times a week in my class. I have one inclusion lesson, I teach at every classroom.
Yeah.
And I had them three times a week in my class, so that was an hour and a half. One day was to teaching a new lesson and giving them, administering the program. The other two days, I let them use the iPads. Or if there was something that the teacher would prefer me to work with that child on, then I worked at a separate table and we worked on that. So about an average of an hour a week. In the classroom, they have more, they would have more flexibility on using them more often. And I would hope that they would have, I would hope that they would make sure they put aside, let's say, set aside 20 minutes a day, half hour a day each day.
I saw some very interesting uses of the iPad. One of, one of the most interesting, we do academic walkthroughs of the buildings. I think we did every, we walked through every building twice this year. One of the very interesting uses, at Crandall School, one of the teachers would, he was, he was instructing a writing lesson. Students had been reading about a nonfiction topic. It was a self-selected topic. It was on the general topic of environments and biomes and things of that nature. And children selected their own individual topic within that. And then he used. And then, he used Discovery streaming video, and every child at their desk had a video about the biome of which they were studying with a, on level, a book at their grade level on that topic. And I thought, as I was doing that walkthrough, I thought, "I think we have a nicely aligned Common Core lesson here with a media source, which is providing information, and he's listening to that and viewing that, with a nonfiction source that they're reading and interpreting. And then, in the writing that they have to produce, we hope that the teacher will be looking for, for specific information that's accurate, that, that understands the author, the creator's point of view." And we, we saw lots of very interesting applications that were, that the teacher did not apply for the iPad, asking to use it this way, but they found new and better ways to use it as time went on. And that was one of the ones that struck me the most because we, we, we pay for Discovery streaming video. It's a very good resource, but the more we can use something like that, of course, the more use we're getting from that, from that resource and that expenditure.
And Tom?
The results that you're showing are very promising. It's the first year. And continued tracking of the same students would be important, especially when you're, to see if these gains are carried forward. I understand it's a tool. One of the hardest things I think a teacher has to do is to get someone that young's attention span to focus long enough. And I think that because it's entertaining for them, that's what the advantage of, of this program is, is because it is entertaining, and it's more of a game than anything else. But again, I would need to see some more long-term tracking before I would, I would judge it as a complete success. I mean, it's very promising, but I'd be very, very careful before saying what a wonderful cure-all this is.
When you're talking, you said you were a math teacher. When you're talking about percentiles, you know that it's a bell curve. So, if you have a child, and my children are usually typically at the lower end of that bell curve, you start moving them forward into the average level. You can't really expect that they're going to then continue as strongly because that would, you'd then say they're gifted. And they wouldn't be, probably become gifted in a couple of years when we're working on, you know, when they're starting, you're working to get them in the bell curve. So, you want them to be in the 25th to 75th percentile. And my children are well into that. So, I, I wouldn't expect like huge gains beyond this. It's just that I would like to see this duplicated. I would like to see the next class come in, and new students, can they perform the same way, or was it just a fluke?
But it would be important that, that, that they don't lose anything.
Correct.
I mean, if, if, if they, that's, that was my point, not, yes, it's very important that the next group maintain the same level of, of improvement. I mean, that's, that's when you can start really saying, "Wow." But it, it needs to be maintained. I mean, I've seen other studies done where, where new, new technologies come out, and it's great. And then, long-term, they're like, "Nah, this didn't work." So, that's what I would be, it's promising. That's what I'm saying. It's, promising is probably a better word than, "Wow, great." Because it is pilot, and we need more data. I, I think I need more data, anyway.
Tia?
I guess the data I need is how well my son progressed with Jen's son using the iPad in math. So, I guess you could say me and Jen are almost living proof of what we saw our kids do. And I know not every family has an iPad, but they would also come home, because you can also put these apps on your own iPads. And then, they would come home, and they would want to continue doing it. Whether it was game-like or not, they were learning. And it made learning fun, and learning should be fun for an eight and nine-year-old.
You know, a lot of the, a lot of the games we used to use, and we're, we're familiar with them, because, you know, as we get a little older, we're familiar with the things from the past, which were more games. These aren't really games. They're engaging, but it's a constant, "This is the problem. Solve it." "This is the problem. Solve it." It's much more on target. There's no, you know, play, play around with this activity and have fun with it. And there's a little bit of math in there. It's all math. It's just at the end, there's that reward. "I get to feed my fish now. I get to go into the aquarium and have fun with my fish." That was not the way it was before in the past. This is just to me, this is just spectacular. And to, and to the children. They're excited. They walk in, like, "Is today an iPad day?" You know, "Are we going to work on the iPads today?"
Yes, and they, and it was even more than just math, that they ended up coming home and putting on the iPad. And the teacher did, that we had, did a presentation, and she used her iPad at the end of the year. And, you know, I definitely didn't hear anybody saying it was a cure-all, but I did hear that you've seen the benefits after one year, and now, let's see the benefits after two. And you're taking that base model of keeping some of those kids, and that's why you've kept them even from the prior year to move forward.
Donna, and then Jen. Joyce, were you looking to ask another question?
Me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm a media.
Okay.
I, I just have a quick question. What other computer-aided math reinforcement programs did you have prior to getting the iPad?
Are you talking about when I would go into the computer labs with the children? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking in your math lab. Did you have anything that was computer-aided that was reinforcement? Which is really what this is.
In my room, we used to have, we used to have, this is what happened. We used to have these little clam shells. Do you remember those clam shell computers, those little iPad IMAX? And we had all the games, and I had the children set up in an area, and we would work on some of those activities then.
Not as easy.
You, you couldn't get the children to work the mouse. It was an absolute nightmare. So, you had to have your own mouse attached to it. Then, you would try to get the children to make the little cursor go where it needed to go. And even kindergartens and first-grade children could learn how to do it, but it was such a waste of time. This, they just push their finger on. Even, even to get onto a website, like even for the IXL, to get on the website, they had to type in the website, then they had to type in their password and their name, username. For the app, they just clicked on their name and they began. It was, and I have 30 minutes. That's all I have. So, if I lost five minutes or 10 minutes, or there'd be times when, when the internet would be down, and we'd discover it. We'd go on, "Oh, the internet's down. I guess we can't use that particular program." So, wasted time. We don't have any of that wasted time now. Everything is just immediate, it's so fast, so quick.
So, that's basically what the iPad brings to you, is a consistency and an ease of application for these reinforcing programs.
And there's no wasted minutes.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Jen?
One thing I'd like to see is, because not every child was in a class, is if the teachers could, especially in the beginning of the year, maybe say like, on the website, even for parent, even for parents that don't have a child using the iPad, what apps they can use. And also, like, when I had to buy, I bought Splash Math for the kids, but there's all the different things you can buy. Like, they may not be doing a certain section, you know, like, he didn't do multiplication until January, so I didn't have to buy that right away. But have maybe a little bit of a schedule about what to purchase and stuff like that, or how to get onto it and stuff, because that would be incredibly helpful for parents.
I know that in the summer packets that went home, the summer math packets that went home, I don't know if you had a chance to look at your child's, but in the front-
No, they're still on vacation tonight.
Summer math packet, everybody. But in the front of it, there's a whole section of all different kinds of math activities, and it was also listed where our favorite apps that they could get onto. So, it was mentioned.
Okay.
So, it's on there, and we do, you know, every time it's back to school night, we always want to emphasize that. We just don't want to make the people, the parents who can't afford these things feel like they're not, you know, they're depriving their children. We don't want to go that route either, so we, yes.
But we also don't want to ruin it for the kids that do have that opportunity either.
So, it's all listed right there, exactly.
And some of the apps you can, most everyone has an iPhone, yeah.
And we, I don't know about you, but like, we're supposed to do 20 minutes of math at night, and I just hand them my phone when we're like driving somewheres and say, "Do math facts for 20 minutes." So, that's our 20 minutes of math.
There's nothing more important than learning those facts, I'll tell you right now. We really need to focus on that. That was one of the main things that I really spent, had time, and the children spent time on, was their memorizing of those math facts, saying it like they say their name. They need to be able to know it like that. Then, they can free up their mind to think about all the other math content.
Conceptual math, yes.
So, smart mom. High five.
Joyce?
This first year, you feel is a success. But it still provided the contact for a comparatively small group of children. And ideally, we'd have exactly what we just reported for the math classes at Parkman, going on everywhere. How close are we moving toward that direction? Not necessarily iPad, but some. I mean, the iPads are great-
Right.
-because it's small, it can be handled, it, it works well. But there must be other, because we've had computers around for a while.
Yes, we do. I probably can't answer accurately right from, from this moment. I, I could do more research with Mr. Vares and tell you exactly where we are with number of devices in the district of, of one type or another. And I, I can get you that information. I don't think I can speak to it accurately right this minute.
It would be a nice choice if there was some kind of corporation who'd be willing to buy these for the, for the children. It's just, in my opinion, it's just like something that is a necessity now in today's day and age. You know, the farther, the longer that we wait to get these in the hands of the children, the less prepared they're going to be comparative to the other children that are, you know, competing with them from now till high school levels. So, I, but yes, and about the computer labs, this is the reason, one of the other real, real reasons I applied for this iPad consortium was because now the computer labs at Parkman, I used to be able to take the classes in one class a week, 30 minutes a day. Now, three whole days are taken up by the computer teacher because it's only grades three to five now in one, in one school. There's more flexibilities in, in the K to two schools. But there's three whole days taken up, so that leaves the teachers two days to squeeze in time, 18 classrooms, to try and squeeze in time to go into the lab. So, there's no way I can bring my five or six children in. I just can't squeeze them in. So, that's why this was the perfect solution for me. I actually had asked for the, the old clam shells, and I actually got some of those old clam shells, and I had them set up in the back of my room and was expecting that would be what I would doing, would be doing this year, because I just needed to get them on the computers. And then, this whole thing came up, so that's why I applied for it.
Do we anticipate that there may be the loss of interest because it becomes too familiar working with an iPad?
You know, I thought that, and I also thought that maybe because they're working on math facts. Every time they come in, I make them start with a math fact. Isn't that going, going to get bored, boring for them? And I get children who, after the math fact practice, would say, "Do I have to go on a Splash Math? I'd really rather keep on working on learning my math facts." And I didn't expect any of that, didn't expect any of that. But they get, they get themselves in a rhythm, and they're enjoying what they're doing, that they're just happy doing that, not, not needing to be moving to something else. Of course, I'll tell them, "Well, that's enough for that, and we went to this." But I was, I was really shocked at some of their excitement, Joyce, really.
And do you anticipate any of that?
I think when Mr. Gaffney reported information at the high school level, he did report, if you recall, that he also used a tool called Educreations, where he recorded himself doing a lesson much like, you know, the online Khan Academy. And he said some children did not prefer to learn that, in that flipped classroom way, where they would watch at night, perhaps the lesson, and then come in, and it would be more of a work setting. So, I think we do have to keep that in mind and look at, students learn in different ways. Students like different ways of learning. Some students need relationship a lot more than others. I think we all need relationship to learn. Some students need relationship to learn. And so, we have to look, and that's why I think this approach was wise. We could have said, "We have 300 iPads. Let's disperse 30 per school or something and just, just go that route." But instead, we, we garnered interest of people like Ms. Foss, who were very motivated, who were willing to come after school, who were willing to share with their colleagues, who were willing to collect and analyze data. And this isn't scientific data, obviously, that has been verified by a psychometrician, but it is our anecdotal, it is our data sets, and some of it quite good, especially when we look at nationally normed testing. So, as Mr. Sarad pointed out, it's a very promising start. I think we did it in a, in a, I think we, we tried to do it in a very smart way. I do anticipate there are all kinds of learners, and we have to be ready to say it's a tool, it's a real powerful tool. But there's other tools in our toolbox that are, that have to be used equally. And, and I think there is never a substitute for, and I want to give Ms. Fossa another kind comment here because she develops relationships with her students. And I don't believe they'd want to come in and use the iPad so enthusiastically if they didn't feel that, that classroom is a warm, inviting place where they feel confident. There's a great chance they're going to grow. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Your beginning comment reminded me of something that you had, you herself had brought up earlier in the year about flipping the classroom. Do you know of any teachers that are doing that at this point, within our town, that is?
Well, Mr. Mr. Gaffney has been doing it through the site called Educreations, which lets him record his voice and have a whiteboard where he can write the lesson out for the students, and they can watch it. I think he shared that with some other teachers. So, we have some limited use of that at this time.
Okay. Jen?
On that, and I know I've, I've beaten you over the head, Ann, about it, but, you know, the, the new way that we multiply, that parents have no clue about these stupid circles and stars and everything like that. If, like Mrs. Foss, someone that has the iPad could put together even something, a presentation, and we could put it on YouTube, so next year, when the kids come home and say circle and stars, that you can say, "Oh, well, look on the web because our teacher has something out there." Because this new way of multiplying, dividing, you know, we ask, "Why aren't you carrying?" And, you know, our kids look at us like we have six heads, so that would be a great thing to use.
I won't put Ms. Foss on the spot right now and ask her, but I'm sure I can follow up with that next year. And we could probably do something for a YouTube video, which we can link to the site, so parents could look at-
I know that a lot of that is on the Macmillan website. Macmillan, it are our books that we use sparingly, but we do use them. We have the Math Connects. And the Macmillan MH website does have, you go into any grade level that your child is, it'll show the book, and then, it will show any activity. So, you look along the top, and you say multiplication, click on that, and it will show you exactly the way that it's taught in the classroom.
We'll have to get that out to the parents.
So, every-
We might not even have to make one. We might have one that we can just get on for you.
Peter?
Couple things. One, knowing now that the, your group of teachers gets together after school, I'd like to say thank you for, you know, giving up their time to do that. A couple concerns. As far as the, the test results and the percentile increases, you're doing the testing with the iPads, correct?
No.
Oh, you're not?
It's an eight-minute paper pencil test.
Oh, okay.
It's a front and back for the MCOMP. So, the whole, the whole eight minutes, they're supposed to be working. They're supposed to be going in order from problem number one to whatever, and they may not finish the test. It's expected that in eight minutes, they probably most likely will not finish the test. That's why it's nationally normed. It's much more difficult and challenging. You don't expect them to finish the test. And the same with the MCOMP. That's an eight-minute test. But that one is longer. It has like five pages to it, and it's all mixed skills.
Okay, so the instruction is being done by the iPad. The testing is being done on paper and pencil?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
Now, what happens with these kids when that dreadful day comes when they have to start taking these tests and doing the work where they're doing computation, and there's a, a, a good degree of reading involved? And then, they have to write out their answers at the same time?
Well, this is why I had asked, next year, I want, I want to try a new, it wasn't something that was in the budget this year, but I'd like to try another additional app called the Singapore Math App. And everything on the Common Core State Standards came from the small country of Singapore, which is number one in math in the world. And so, there is an actual app that I can use that has word problems. And this is a piece that I believe is missing right now with what I'm doing. I do do the word problems, but it would be a lot more efficient on the computer because they click on a little bar. It's called Bar Model. The way they solve these problems is through Bar Model usage, and it's, it's proven that it's very successful. So, they, they click on a bar, and they make the bar to be a certain length, depending on what the word problem says. They read a little at a time, and if it says, "Tommy has 54 pennies." They'll click on this, create this bar, and above it, they'll put this, and there's actually this little curvy thing is on the, on the site, on the app. And they'll put a 54 above that. And then, it will say, "And To, and Johnny has twice as many as Tommy has." They'll make another little bar, and it'll make it twice as long. They'll make another little bar and it'll make it twice as long, until they'll know it has to be fifty-four plus fifty-four. And they draw it all out. And this is what's expected now in the Common Core, that we teach the children these types of things. And that's how they're able to solve these difficult, with all these, with all the words in it. The whole strategy is they take one step, one piece at a time. How many of you liked word problems when you were a kid? Did you, you did? Oh, word problems, get them away from me. No, I didn't like them at all. But if, if I had known this strategy of taking one little sentence at a time, figuring out what that meant. Too much reading. They just read through the whole problem, they're like, "I don't know what to do, I don't know where to..." Especially my children, who usually, if they're in my math room, they aren't really strong readers. So they just read through as fast as they can, and I don't really know what to do, and so they'll just guess. And there's usually A, B, C, D, and they pick whichever one letter they're feeling like is hot today. I think I'll pick C. But this is an actual method to teach problem solving, which I'm really excited about. So that is a solution to that, if I was able to use that site next year. And I'm not even sure what the cost is of, of this site. But the children, if they all were able to use this model drawing. And I think that we're doing something with model drawing too, aren't we? Is it something?
We are buying some bar modeling support.
I...
Go ahead. Oh, I was going to say one more thing. God, please don't tell me the rope memorization of multiplication tables is gone.
No.
No, you have to.
Okay.
No, in fact, one of the, when, and Mr. Sarad pointed this out, this is promising from what we saw this year. One of the most promising areas, I would say, is in elementary math. Because, um, things that have slipped away over years are knowing your math facts automatically within three seconds. Every multiplication item, every, you know, small devising, you know, lower level numbers, addition and subtraction. And this is one of the reasons I think the iPad in this particular use is a very strong, a big, very strong connection. Conceptual math is, the iPad may not be as helpful there. So we have to look at where it is and where it is less helpful. But I think in elementary math, to learn your facts, your place value, which is crucial to all math, it has a, it had a very high success rate there because it is practice. And, um, we will need to continue to look for other solutions, or if this is a solution, to multi-step word problems, to more complex math, to conceptual math.
That's a good question, because that's a big push now, is this, are these word problems? And a lot of reading, a lot of reading involved, so this, right. So they need a strategy. The children need to be taught a strategy, and that's what we're working on, making sure they have the strategy in place.
Any other questions?
No, I have a couple I'd like to throw out to you folks. One, I'm very pleased, as I think the board is, that I think it has tremendous potential. I think the direction you're going with the limited number of iPads you had, you know, you had a choice of having everybody do the same thing, or go out and have people apply for projects and see what they could come up with. I'm guessing that you're collecting the data, what worked, what didn't, what is a promising practice, what isn't, and so on. And you have some plan as to what the next steps are, so my question is, what are the next steps?
So we collected the data three times during the year. At the end, we asked teachers what exact, what were the number one apps in math and in reading and any others. They gave that to me, I made sure to extend our licenses. If, for instance, the A to Z Reader was the most popular across the board for elementary reading. So I made sure to extend that license to all schools this year at all levels. So every classroom has that. And that, it can be accessed on the iPad or the computer or other devices, so that, that's one outcome. Splash Math. We will, we will not use iExcel next year. We will extend our licenses in areas that we saw more productive, more production. We need to look at next year's consortium and if, if it's possible to see if we should, as Mr. Sarad suggested, should, should we put effort into tracking some of the children? So Ms. Foss had some children in fourth grade this year. They'll be in fifth grade, maybe we'll talk to her about keeping those fourth graders and the fifth graders. Let's see if they maintain the gains they had or continue to make gains as we pick up new children as well.
I think you also picked up enthusiastic teachers like Mrs. Foss, who, who sold the product with their enthusiasm. So you had twenty-five teachers or so. How do we get the other four hundred and fifty, or whatever it is, involved in this as well and the rest of the kids? I don't know how many kids you actually touched with the iPads, but, I mean, in, in the long run, you know, the, the big plan would be to get everybody to be able to touch it. We don't want to have the haves and have-nots, nor do we want to exclude people whose parents are getting this at home. And at some point, we have to push that, the idea of bring your own device to school, if that's the only way to do it. Or, and this is a question for you, Ann, is there going to be a place where this is going to replace the textbook? And we're going, that's, we spend huge amounts of money on textbooks, which are out of date as soon as we get them. And is, is that a way to get additional iPads? Is, has anybody looked into that research in terms of what the subscriptions cost? Is there, is there a cost-effective way to put more of these devices in kids' hands? And the other one is, are we collecting that data from the device? Because I know you said you were doing paper and pencil stuff, which I understand, but is there a way to collect that data from the device and get it into our AMES web database and so on?
Yes, it actually goes right into the AMES.
It goes right into that, okay.
And that will eventually come over to our, our master database. So all of that will come right in.
That's the direction you're going to save those steps, so that we don't get involved in inputting scores and things, things like that.
I can tell you that the, the textbook companies are pretty savvy.
Yes, they are.
So they've already, I think, looked down the road and looked at their potential losses from actual book sales. So they're, they're pretty savvy in that they're selling subscriptions to their textbooks. When you buy the book, you get a subscription to the, um, the electronic version. And they're setting up in such a way that, you know, they're, they're, they're pretty smart to keep their, to keep their money. So their subscriptions are often six years online, where, where you might keep a book ten. So we have to be really savvy about how we approach it, so that we don't get ourselves in a situation where we purchase subscriptions that all of a sudden in six years, actually less than the life of the book, are no longer valid, valuable for us.
I guess the question I have is there, a lot of them have the textbook online, so to speak. Some of them are, are interactive, some are just basically a Xerox copy that's online. And some are made specifically to take advantage of the, of the iPad. I know some of the biology ones I've seen are just beyond belief in terms of what you can, you can get out of that and all the interactive things. And you can take a skin, a picture of skinning, go right down to the cell level, which is just amazing. Or you can get a video right on, on the thing. It's, it's, there, there's fantastic stuff that's coming along. I guess I'm wondering, not tonight, but where is our, where are we headed? Is that a direction that we're headed in? Is it a direction that we're headed into getting, you know, bring your own device to school? Because we won't be able to afford all these devices. I know with our, our, our high school, we're looking at having individual devices, eighteen hundred or two thousand devices, if I'm not mistaken, with the wireless out there. So where are we headed? And I'd love you to report back to us at some point with Mr. Brass or, or with, you know, whoever else that would need to be involved in that, to kind of tell us how you envision this. And a cost-effective way that would allow us, instead of having a benefact to donate these things, that we could figure out a way to use our budget and a more efficient way to, to, to get some more of these devices out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions, folks? Very good, thank you very much. It was very, very interesting. I appreciate all the work you're doing.
You do your time.
No, no, come on back. We'd love to hear the updates on this on a regular basis. Next item on the agenda is the need for a new meeting, I believe, to do interviews and...
Right. If I'm not mistaken? On the twenty-third of July, we've scheduled a special meeting for the Board of Education. We'll begin with the board meeting the finalists for the STEAM and Humanities Coordinator. We began a first round of interviews yesterday and today. We met with fourteen candidates. We are moving three candidates forward for the humanities position and four forward for the STEAM position. And we'll be going to meet with them again next week, twice. Asking them to perform some skills and tasks and presentations for us, so we can narrow that a little further and have finalists for the board the following week. We also have asked our attorney, Mr. Mills, to come that evening, probably around seven-thirty, to do the initial briefing as we enter into negotiations with the Enfield Teachers Association. So he'll be here as well to help you with that. Additionally, in regards to that, we have scheduled a session with the Town Council on August fifth at five-thirty, so that we can have that meeting with the council and inform them of where we are in terms of negotiations. And, you know, that they are, have a, have an opportunity to place someone on the negotiating committee so they can fall as the financial authority for the community. So they'll be telling us who that representative is, if they haven't already, and we can bring them up to speed where we are. On the twenty-third also, we do expect to have some more information about negotiations that are ongoing with other bargaining units. Item sixteen A is reserved tonight for matters related to collective bargaining. No, nothing has really changed to the point where we need to have that, so I'm going to recommend to the board that we do not go into executive session tonight. But we will be sure to be prepared, if possible and if necessary, on the twenty-third to bring you up to speed on where that negotiation is.
Okay, just a couple of questions, just on the meeting. It's, it's going to take place in two parts. One are interviews. Is, is that going to be a workshop or is that going to be part of the meeting that will, be one meeting with the, for the interviews? Or will we do it as a, as a separate meeting?
I don't know how the board's done that before.
It would be a regular board meeting, you go into executive session, and then if you take any action, you go into public session. And again, you name candidate by a letter subsequent.
What, what time will that meeting start, the interviews?
Six P.M.
That'd be six P.M. We're allowing about an hour and a half for that to take, roughly.
Correct.
Okay. And there'll, there'll be basically two items on that agenda or a third with a separate executive session to look at the collective bargaining issue, right?
Correct.
Very good.
There's one other item that is not on...
Before you go on, how many finalists are going to be brought before the board?
We hope to narrow the field to two for each position.
Assuming that you can, you, you have, you feel comfortable recommending them?
We're at three and four right now, and we're hoping to be able to...
Narrow that down?
Bring it down again. Yeah. One other item that's not on there that I just wanted to make you aware of and, and let you know this is coming. One of the, the strategies that worked out very well for us in terms of learning about the community and learning about the needs of the community were our listen and learn sessions. And we do intend to structure them a different way. We probably won't do seventeen the way we did last year, but we do intend to do them again in the fall. But one of the pieces we'd like to add, and I'd like to add, is a listen and learn session with the board. And I'd like to do a one-on-one listen and learn session with each member of the board over the course of the summer. So I get a chance, now that we've been together for a year, we're starting our second year, I think it'd be important for me to sit down with each of you for a period of time, an hour or so, over the summer and just, you know, get some individual feedback, hear your vision, let you, let me share mine. We can just spend some time listening and learning from each other as we get into the second year of our, our time together. So over the next few days, I'll send some emails out to each of you and ask you for your availability. And, and we'll schedule those in and have you come in, and we'll just spend a little time together going over that. But I want, if you had any questions about that before the emails come out, and I know Ms. Hall, that you're going to be a little more difficult to have come in, so maybe we'll be talking on the phone or Skyping or something. But other than that, hopefully, we can find a time with everyone else. But I just want to let you know we're going to do that and answer any questions about that, if you had any.
All right, Tina?
This is something that some of the companies do. I don't know if you do it, but after we have, you know, a busy time at work or something, they have something called like a postmortem, they call it. And it's a meeting to kind of debrief over the last, you know, whatever you were working on. I'm sure I'm going to have a really big one, once the restatement goes through. But I, um, we don't really do that as a board. Like, after the school year, we don't really sit down and debrief over the school year and, and it's never come up. And I've only been on the board for two years, but there's no debriefing, there's no anything that says what the board members might have seen or what the board members would like to see. I know we have our goals, but just anything immediate. So, um, maybe these meetings is a definite good step in that direction.
Good. It's a little bit morbid term, but I'll, I look forward to the discussion.
No, but just, I, I don't know how you feel about that, but it's just like, kind of like a debriefing. I mean, because you do have board members that are hugely involved in the school systems, not only with their kids, but, you know, even Donna with the building committee and just different things, to kind of just go over and say, "How was the school year?"
I think in the past, we used to, I know, in the schools, we've done it as a retreat, where we sit down and say, "Okay, this is, this is where we started, and this is where we are. What went well, what didn't go well, what do we have to do to change?" And you need to get into some difficult topics sometimes to make that happen. We called it a postmortem as well, but sometimes it's classy to say retreat.
I mean, just, just observations, because we are, we are in the second year. We just finished the second year of the reorg, you know, and where we are with that as far as the busing and, and the success of the, um, the teaching teams and, um, you know, just kind of...
I think it's a point well taken. And I don't think, you know, I, I think what Dr. Schuman's suggesting is a good idea, but I also think that one is. And there's nothing to preclude us from doing it except time. Okay, and getting us all together. I know we did a retreat and with people's job responsibilities and stuff, it's, it's difficult to get together. I'm more than willing to, I think it's a great idea, we used to do it. If, if it's the board's will to do that, I, I don't think Dr. Schuman would have a problem with that. And I think it could be beneficial to sit down and do that. Vinny, you have something?
No.
No? Anybody else? We'll bring it up for further discussion, I think it's a good idea.
We don't have to call it postmortem.
I know that. Okay, anything else, Dr. Schuman?
That's it for tonight.
Okay, very good. I don't see any other audiences unless Ann and Foss want to speak again, but...
Come on.
We'll move on. Is there any unfinished business, item nine? No, moving on, new business? Yes, we have action, if any, regarding the contract renewal which you sent to us in the email. You want to take us through that?
Yes, the community health centers have been operating for a, quite a period of time here in the Enfield School District, and they've been quite successful. There's an item in your packet that shows all the data. We asked them to provide some data for last year, so you can see the numbers of students that they met with and the work they did. And they do have a annual contract that allows them to operate. Interestingly, the, we missed the deadline somehow last year and the contract was never renewed. So we kind of operated for a year without the contract. So we have drawn up a new contract and looked at it with them. And one of the things that we're suggesting in the new contract is that it be open-ended. In other words, the contracts stay in place until one party elects to opt out. And so that way, we wouldn't be in the situation where we were last year when we missed it and this year having to, to do this work again. At any time point, the board could decide with a new contract, if the board were to go forward and authorize its approval, the board could say, "Within a, we're not interested in doing this any longer," and, and we could opt out of the contract. And then what I would foresee would be in the future, each year, we'd either bring the data to you or we'd actually bring the folks from the Community Health Center to you to meet with you as one of your guests and kind of give you an update on where things are going. And that way, the program would just be sustainable until one of the parties decided that they needed to go in a different direction. If that's not acceptable to the board, we can ask C H C to draw up another annual contract, and we can do this year to year with the expectation that we will revisit it, although somehow it slipped through last year and it wasn't done.
Peter?
I think because of the, the changes that take place on the board, the members who sit here, that it might be worth our while to, either when a new board is seated or every year, at least have it brought before the board to board, to have the board vote to say, "Keep the contract going." Only so everybody's aware of this thing exists. Because new boards, say, two years from now, there may be five people sitting here that have no idea what this is even about. And would, this would force them to say, "What are you guys talking about? What is this?"
I, I agree that they should absolutely come here, and I'd like to see them in person, giving us the data and talking about the direction that they're headed in. I think the, the problem that I, that I contemplate with it is that they hire staff based on the, the needs of, of the school, and they also have their staff work in the summertime at their sites. And actually, I think sometimes at our sites as well, continuing this with the kids and groups and individually. So I, I, you know, I, I think as long as we have the caveat that we can end this anytime that we like, I would just, it's like a teacher contract, have an ongoing thing that, that we, we have an ongoing contract so they can plan their staffing levels. But I think that they should come in at the end of the year, you know, in June or something like that, and give us a detailed update of, an annual report, yeah. Because I know, based on, on, and personal experience, the dental thing is, it works out very, very well. But of particular interest to me was the, the social work part of it, where they provided services that we just couldn't afford, and, and they provided immediately. I know we've talked before about the number of kids that have, need services throughout the year. And it's very, very difficult to get them signed up for one of the, actually even get them have an intake meeting with one of the practitioners in town. Whereas with this group, they can see a young... Whereas with this group, they can see a youngster within a day or two of there's a crisis. And, you know, that's worked out very, very well, regardless of insurance, regardless of any roadblocks, and also regardless of having a parent's having to take time off from work to come in and having to schedule that. So those are just my thoughts.
But that's not what I'm questioning. What I'm questioning is, just to make sure new board members are constantly aware of what the program is.
I think they should, I think they absolutely should come in and tell us what it's all about. Okay, we agree on that. The ongoing contract, as long as we have an out in it, I would go with the ongoing contract. Go ahead, Jen.
How come the littler schools don't have behavioral health, only the high schools and JFK?
Well, that's a service that they have chosen to provide. Actually, in my conversation with them, they would be interested in looking into that. And part of that conversation also centered around the board's concern, and as well as the administration's concern, about the number of students we've seen at risk over the course of the year. And so we talked to them about that, and Kathy is putting together some data for them to look at about where those at-risk students were from and which particular school. And they're going to look into their resources and decide if they can bring a pilot program forward from perhaps one of the schools that we identified that seemed to have to struggle with at-risk students more, and maybe try a pilot at one of the intermediate, one of the K-2 schools next year, and see if, you know, they're, obviously, this is something that they're totally funding. This is not our funding, so they want to see if it's something they can afford to allocate resources to. So they're looking into that, and if we feel that it would be a good match and help us solve that other problem that we talked about, they're going to go ahead and try and do that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Joyce.
I think the ongoing contract makes a great deal of sense, because it does provide us with a continuity and not having to bring it up every single year for renewal. But as Peter said, I think we all need to know that it exists. And extending it to the elementary schools makes good sense to me, because that is also where we're having the protective custody issues arising.
You're right.
So I'd like to move.
Okay. I wasn't saying not to keep it open-ended, I just.
I know you weren't.
Oh, okay.
It was an "and," it was not an "instead."
She was agreeing with you, Peter.
I was agreeing with you, Peter.
It's the heat. What's wrong, Joyce?
Go ahead, Joyce.
I wish to move that the Enfield Board of Education shall continue its relationship with the Community Health Center Incorporated with an ongoing contract.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Vinny. Is there any further discussion on this? Hi, Tom.
There needs to be a caveat added that an annual report be required to the contract in order to maintain.
Just have it in the contract.
It needs, yes, it's not in the contract, as far as I can see at this time, that needs to be added, and until it is, I'm sorry.
That's a great point. When we were talking about that, I just scrolled down through and didn't see, I don't see any problem with us putting a paragraph in there that, you know, instructs them that they'll come before us every June or every spring and give us the, basically, explain that data report that we have right there. I don't think they'll have a problem adding that.
So Tom, do you have any problem adding that as an amendment? Or Joyce, do you have a problem adding that as an amendment to your motion?
No, I think it's a significant part of what we want to approve.
I think we all agree upon, do you have any? And so we just think, we'll just add that to the motion. We can take care of that. And Vinny has agreed to add it in, so we can just go on with further discussion. Is there any other discussion on the motion as amended? Then roll call, please.
Mr. Serard?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Yes.
Mr. Genites?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. Suzak?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. I think, well, we just want to make sure that you have that before you sign it, and we appreciate that.
Mr. Dresser's just pointed out item 13, paragraph 13.
Yes.
Which says, "The CHC agrees to provide statistical data and programmatic reports to the board when requested." Would you like that to be more specific? I mean, so you'd like to say that the board is going to request every spring? So we'll just put down that they will provide it to the board every, the spring of each year. So we just change "as requested" to "the spring," and I think that will solve the concern that the board members have had.
Perfect. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Dresser. Item 11, board committee reports. Do we have any? Joyce?
The curriculum committee has met, and with Jen's help, I have now, will be able to be heard. We sort of held a summary session. The improvement in the future will be an addition of Project Lead the Way, which is the engineering program which has been introduced into the high school, and we wish to introduce it into the middle school, so that there is a growth in that. And STEAM gets introduced in middle school, too.
That's great.
And reviewed the curriculum writing schedule for the summer. We do keep people busy all year round. And discussed, bit to a slight degree, the technology in the classroom. And then have actually reviewed what we've accomplished in the year. So it was a quite interesting meeting and informative, but I don't feel I need to report any more details.
Just as a question, is there a list of the curriculum writing that's going on and the people that are assigned to it?
Absolutely.
Could we get a copy of that sent to the board?
I'm sure it could be done.
Okay. Just so we're all aware of what, because I, you go through the summary, there's a lot of projects going on that refresh our memories to what it is.
Joyce, we haven't looked at just how many strands have been written and tested. That might be an interesting word.
I agree.
I think that not tonight, because we haven't really talked about this unit here, being everybody else up to date.
I mean, a tremendous amount of work has been done by the curriculum, in curriculum writing and in the Common Core.
Oh, okay. That was not what I understood you to be asking.
Yeah. You know, there's so many strands that have been written, tested, and are going to be written, and.
Units, that's the deal.
And I think it's nice to share that, and, you know, we see what our goal is, and, you know, our estimated time of getting everything all in one place.
And the focus for our elementary language arts and math is to have it fully implemented beginning in September.
Very good. So are you asking for those units to be, the completed units, or a list of the completed units to get out to us as well?
She has a chart that she keeps.
If you, she'll give us the chart, that'd be great. Fantastic. Any other, anything else, Joyce?
No.
Okay. Any other board committee reports? Moving on to approval of minutes, we need of a motion for, oh, excuse me. I crossed off the wrong thing here. Board member comments. Do you want to start, Jen?
Yeah, I don't have anything. Definitely.
That was easy, Joyce.
Our bill that we were so concerned about relative to the building of the new consolidated high school has finally been signed by the governor.
Great. Tom?
Nothing.
Actually, I have something, and I don't know if it's really important to anybody else, but I'm always fascinated by how life is full of things that interconnect, and you're always amazed at when they do. My daughter went to an engineering school, and she had a friend who majored in the same program as my son. It's called EMAC, which is Electronic Media Art and Communications. Her specialty was more in the advertising field, and we traveled up to Boston for a wedding for my nephew, and we stayed at her friend's house, and lo and behold, her advertising firm has been employed by Legos. And she will be working with them on the Enfield Lego Consortium, putting out advertisements, which my daughter gladly shared with her, that she has a whole closet full of Legos at home, and she built a hospital when she was younger. And my daughter's a biomedical engineer now, so there you go. And I guess one of the pushes on Lego is for women in engineering. So it was one of these little cyclic things that I always find interesting, so I thought I would share.
Fantastic. Vinny?
Nothing.
Tina?
Nothing.
Peter?
I'd like to thank the Fourth of July Committee that put on the celebration this past week, this past weekend. I thought it went very well. If anybody ever wants to get a pulse of what Enfield is really like, go down to the Fourth of July, any one of the nights, and you'll know what Enfield is like. And I thank them for the tickets that they gave to the Board of Ed members. As far as Legos, did you see where three-quarters of a million dollars of Legos were stolen? That's a lot of Legos. Yeah. And that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Just one or two items. A few weeks ago, we had a, Dr. Schuman and I and the Buzz Robotics folks got together, and I think Ann was there as well, and we talked about ways to keep that program vibrant and deal with some of the changes that are happening, particularly as we talk about moving to one high school and so on. And I know we set up, we, some meetings, but we're going to set up a meeting, and I don't know whether, and I was pushing for it earlier. Has that happened yet?
I know that they had one meeting, and I know that Donna has also had discussions.
I was going to bring that up. She went to the building committee and was talking about that, which was dealing with where the site was, where they're going to be, and how we can make sure that that happens.
So we had a follow-up meeting right after the meeting at which you were present to, I met with one of the gentlemen from Buzz Robotics and three teachers who may be interested in supporting the program. That meeting yielded one teacher who will support the program perhaps once a week, and we're looking into the combination of using that teacher and the present advisor to see if we can provide more direct teacher interest and support. We believe that the interest will grow over time. And then at our curriculum meeting, Mrs. Suzak brought up the space issue and the integration into the STEAM wing, and followed up by, I followed up by writing to Dr. Pangrean, who directed us to, with some instructions for us to get this into the agenda and attach it to a department. So I think we're doing some good work. I thank Mrs. Suzak for not letting that slip.
No, because we've been talking about it, and I think Joyce, I think feels the same way. This is too important, and we need to make sure that this, that we take care of all, any and all issues that may come up that would get in the way of its success, because I think it's a prime candidate to sell our STEAM program.
Right. Basically, because it wasn't tied specifically to a department like the drama club is, that it kind of slipped through the crack of being in the user group. But I know the conversation has been going of tying it right to our technology department, and I know that that's what they're working on and getting that, so that it is. And even though they are STEM and we are STEAM, there's not much.
We are tied now to a user group, and that will help us be able to identify the spaces we need and how we will work with the education technology department.
If you could just keep me informed of when the meetings are at, as many as I could attend, I'd like to, it's just too important to let this go. And I also think, I'd like to, that the board has not had Buzz here. I don't think we've had a presentation in the last couple of years. And I know they were at the town council.
Yeah, it was very good.
And it was very, very well received. But I think we go to educating the board as to this program. Be quiet, Peter. We go to educating the board to this program. I think it would be good to bring them here once we get through the next stage of it, so that we know how it's going to work, and I encourage you to get involved and go to one of the, either one of the meetings or one of the events. They are really a great, a great time. My son was involved in it early on, and I think it, he still has fond memories of that, so. But if we could bring them to the board at some time, Dr. Schuman, that would be great.
Don't leave the topic yet.
Okay.
Two things. Do we pay the primary advisor, like a coach?
We pay an advisor now. We didn't use to. We used to have people on staff like Jimmy Hudrinsky and a few others.
But we are giving something now?
We did, because they retired, and we needed to have, we needed to have somebody legally responsible for the kids and to go on the trips.
It's like a coach's salary or something like that?
Yeah, they worked it out with the ETA, I believe.
Okay. And then the other thing would be, at, as we start to free up space, either if there's something still available at Alcorn or Fermi pretty soon, or Stowe, I wonder if there's, we can get like a permanent home for these people.
That's one of the things that we're talking about, and we have a committee that's working on it. I think Ann's taking charge of that with the others. But one of the issues comes down, we need it actually in a school that's open, because when they get close to competition time, they have all kinds of hours that they're working, and it gets into a custodial and a monetary issue. And it's much easier to do that in a building that is a high school which is open a great deal of time. It's easier to do that without incurring additional expense.
You think there's a local business that would have space? Can we even go down that road?
I don't think, I think you'd run into some insurance issues and stuff like that. And we, right now, we have United Technologies, although it's not called that right now.
TOS now.
U-TOS. Now I get, acronym's wrong. They have been sponsoring us, and I think they also use the facilities of the high school. They store a lot of their equipment, but they also use a lot of the facilities there to actually build the robot. The metalworking stuff.
Yeah, they do metalworking, and they do a lot of hands-on stuff, Peter. So they not only, you know, use computers and things like that, they actually build these robots.
Yep.
So they probably do use their iPads.
Probably program them with those, Peter.
Software is important.
You'd like it, Peter. I think you would.
It's a fun competition.
It's a very fun, it's very, very, very.
Very competitive.
Competitive, around the country. Anyway, I got my questions answered. Thank you very much, Ann, for following up on that. Now.
Now the minutes.
Okay.
Not a minute.
No, fine. Item 13, approval of the regular meeting minutes for June 25, 2013.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Donna, seconded by Vinny. Any comments or any questions about it? Sensing none? Show of hands? All those by a show of hands? Looks like two, two.
I was.
Yeah, okay. But Tina?
I was carrying.
Okay. So any abstentions?
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions. The rest, three ayes, okay. Approval of accounts and payroll. Tina?
The Finance Committee met on July 9, 2013 to review financial statements from May year-to-date and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of May, total expenditures amount to $7,202,896.24, broken down between payroll totaling $6,196,654.57, and other accounts totaling $1,6,241.67. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? Any abstained? Very good. The next one? B.
Yep. The Finance Committee met on July 9, 2013 to review financial statements for June year-to-date and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of June, total expenditures amount to $4,399,459.78, broken down between payroll totaling $2,667,909.58 and other accounts totaling $1,731,550.20. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Seconded by Joyce. Any discussion? Sensing none by a show of hands, all those in favor accepting this minute? Okay. I think all but, any abstentions? And we move on. Is there any line item transfers?
No.
Very good. Item 15, correspondence and communications, anything?
I have received nothing.
Oh, very good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Item 16 is, we don't have to deal with, so it's a motion to adjourn been made by Vinny and seconded by Tina. All those in favor, raise hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? unanimous. See you on the 23rd.